Welcome, everyone, to tonight's special Region 12 Board of Education meeting, November 2nd, 2016. This is a special meeting. So can we take attendance to the board, Rebecca? Please.
Anthony Amato.
Here.
Valerie Anderson.
Here.
Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Cava.
I'm here.
Michelle Gora. James Hirschfield.
Here.
Stephanie Koenig. Jennifer Pody. Lisa Rousch. Michael Sinatra. Peter Tagley.
All right, well, we have a quorum. All right, the first item on the agenda, number two, is to approve revised population enrollment for AgSTEM. Tony, are you prepared to speak to this?
I am.
Thank you.
No, I don't. That's right. Pass it that way. Pass it this way. Take one, pass it around. Okay, as soon as everybody's got a copy, I'll walk you through the document. Greg, you're at the end. Okay. Thanks. Okay, Michelle and I were asked by Jim to work with Pat and the team to go through the enrollment projections based on the information available to us today, which has changed since the last time we went through the enrollment, about this time last year. So what I've got is a -- the graph that you're looking at here is a bit of -- it's a walk going from left to right. So the leftmost column is the enrollment projections that were used in the base case, the business case we put together for the referendum. The next column was the submission that was made to the state in September, which the state then took into account and came back with the letter on the 24th of September as to their thoughts and ideas and a continued endorsement ultimately of the program. So now, what has to happen is we need to resubmit the ed specs, which is on the agenda for tonight, and as part of those ed specs, they -- we need to put in enrollment projections. And they ask specifically for a revised estimate from the original submissions. So what we did is we, instead of coming up with a single data point, you know, one of the lessons here that is there is definitely going to be some variation around the mean. So we thought it would be more productive to talk about the program in terms of a range from, I don't want to say best to worst, but it's more of sort of left to right. So if you look at the range there, you look at the -- there's four different scenarios that we've mapped out to give you a feel for how the numbers may move, and I'll walk you through each one. So starting with the first scenario, we looked at the three-year average coming out of the sending towns. We used the most current enrollment information available to us from Region 14. So when we did the original business case, we had, it was data from 2013 to 2015 was the basis for the three-year average. We now have a new data point, so we recalc the three-year average using 2014 to 2016 data. So that's all reflected in these numbers. So we took those three-year averages, added one to each one to represent growth coming out of each one, each of the sending towns. We used the Danbury cap at 15. And regarding Bethel, this scenario assumes Bethel would say yes. So Bethel's number is also in there at its three-year average plus one. So when you look at that scenario, you get 131 enrolled students, and again, that's grades nine through 12, coming out of the sending towns. The next block at the bottom of the column, where it says four, would be the growth from Region 12, our own students. And the 16, which is the base, is the total enrollment that Region, using our three-year average, that Region 12 has enrolled in Region 14, which obviously those students are coming back to us. So with regards to Region 12's numbers, the recommendation was to use 15% of the total population. So if you, the math, if you want to follow the math, it's at the bottom of the page. We looked at the total high school population per Dr. Prada in year 24, 2024, which is 133. We took 15% of that number, which is 20 rounded up, and we took from that the 16 that are already in an Ag program, and we came up with a balance of four. That's pretty much where the four came from. So the total participation from Region 12 in our AgSTEM program will be estimated at 15% of our total population for a total of 20. Okay? So that's consistent throughout all the different scenarios because there's no reason for that to vary based on what the sending towns do or don't do. It's our expectation, so it's consistent across. You look at the next scenario over, it's using the three-year average plus one, again with the Danbury cap at 15, but this time Bethel declines. And you could see how it pushes the total number from 151 down to 139. The next scenario over is now a three-year average, a straight average, no incremental addition there. Again, the Danbury cap at 15, and this one with Bethel saying yes. And then the last scenario would be the most conservative, which is a continuation of the three-year average, again, the Danbury cap, and Bethel declines. So we have an operating range here of 151 to 119 total students in the program. So let me stop there and field any questions.
Is the public allowed to consider states' paper?
Yeah. Are there any extras?
Any extras?
Here you go. This is what we have.
Did we, when we come to the 16?
All right, so are there any questions for, Tony?
Yeah, I've got one.
So when we deal with the question of 16, are the Region 12 students who are, would already be enrolled in Nanawog, right?
Yes.
And so they are now enrolled in Region 12's AgSTEM program, according to this, and then you add four new. That 16, this is kind of projecting to the population discussions of the '24-'25 school year, right?
Yes.
Are we comfortable that it's, how many is it now, and will it be 16 then with the drop in both our population and Nanawog's population by that point? Is 16 still a safe number at that point?
It would be in that, to try to keep it simple, if your goal is, or the estimation is based on 15% of your total population, then the 15%, again, is a 20 target. Now there, you can use different combinations of 16 and four, 15 and five, et cetera, that gets you to the net 20. So I think what's important there is it's a net 20. So that answers your question. Valerie? Sorry, Jim.
This is like a kindergarten question, but I think, I am looking at the Region 12 enrollment projected by grade to 2025, and that's, your base is 2024?
24-25, yes.
Okay. On this chart, the Prada chart that's part of our draft for consideration, I'm seeing nine to 12, that is, say, grades nine to 12, 2024 to 25 at 162. Is that your start point, and where am I looking wrong?
I don't know what you're looking at. I'm just looking at Prada's chart.
It's an addendum page, yeah, page 13 of 15. Excuse me, go back to the top. Revised proposal, ed specs, and it has, it says ed specs for science lab renovations, but it's the revised proposal, and I'm assuming it's the same for all.
Just using what Bob.
So what's the differential there? Am I not looking at it right? It's fine with me. What was it, 162? Now I have lost it now.
Do you see it, Michelle, if you have the whole thing with you?
Yeah.
What do you see for 24-25?
24-25, 162, grades nine to 12.
162.
I'm not sure where 133.
No, not 133.
No, I didn't say 133.
Bob, where did you get 196 from? 196?
No, wait, what do you want?
What's your 2024 population base that you're working this off of?
You're talking about, I thought you were talking about the Region 12, the calculation at the bottom there.
Right. I just want to s-
25, we're looking at Region 12's population and trying to figure out what 15% of that is correct.
Oh, I see. So in other words, right here it says that the 24-25 enrollment is 133, but on the sheet you're seeing 162. Okay, so where did 133 come from? Is that's the question we're looking for?
That was on the report, but I don't have it with me.
Yeah, it was also repeated in the letter on the 24th from the state, whereas in the last second page, last sentence, where they say the projected enrollment is to be 133 students in 2024. So that number's been used several times, so.
So here, we have it on this also. Now, unfortunately, I'm not sure where everything has come from after all of these.
All right, all right. Anthony's answering the question.
No, but I'm saying 133 is right here.
He said it comes from Anthony.
Yeah, that's where it was taken from. But is that a legitimate place?
Yeah, but why is it 133 when you had it as 162?
That's a good question, Valerie. I don't know if you can.
So let's have Bob, so let's have Bob go back and, unless he could find it, validate what the number should be, because it should be whatever.
So we should have about 30 kids more, according to his projections, which have been correct.
If it's-
Are we excluding Sherman from, no, we're not, are we?
Yes.
I mean, we're doing that on this, but not on Prada, no, Prada, no Sherman.
Prada shouldn't include Sherman.
No. Uh-uh.
Might, that might be the difference. So why don't we, why don't we check it out? And it's 15% of X, so whatever X is going to be, it's going to be.
Rebecca has a question.
Michael?
I'm just, I had a question about the footnote on the bottom. It said that the planning range scenario is use most current three-year averages for Region 14. Do you mean averages of their enrollment in their AgSTEM program at Region 14?
Correct.
Okay. So there are two reasons why I feel these are conservative, based on information we've heard as a board, and I'm wondering if either of these facts are incorrect. Fact number one is that we've been told that, on average, Region 14 turns away approximately 50% of student applicants to their AgSTEM program, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's one fact that should make us feel good about this very conservative estimate. If 50% of the numbers are not being reflected in your bar graph here, we should keep that in mind. The other fact that we've been told is that Region 14 currently does minimal recruitment into their AgSTEM program. The main reason being because they're turning away 50% of the students, that we've been told that he has done, he would expect that the numbers could grow significantly if we did even a modest amount of recruitment efforts in the sending towns. Is that fact incorrect?
I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Sure. No, it's not incorrect.
Okay. So I just wanted to, so those are, those are two reasons that these numbers are very conservative.
Well, let me, let me just go back to your first point. So the, I was just talking round numbers just to make it easier. Region 14 had, what, 50 to 60, as we all remember, a year, that applicants a year that they're turning away, qualified applicants, because of their capacity constraints, or whatever their reason is. And roughly speaking, we look at the sending towns that are now aligned with Region 12 would account for half of that. Again, very broad brush, would account for half of that. Those, and that's what's in these numbers. So the other half of the students that they're still turning away belong to their sending towns. So until, unless and until we have a deal cut with Region 14, for example, that would, where they would agree to send us their overflow, or the students they still can't satisfy, then it would represent upside to us. Or if we negotiate with them, for example, if we can get, you know, another sending town to, you know, you know, these are all possibilities. But until we can do something like that, their half, those other, the other half of the demand that's not going satisfied is on, or is in their court, it's not in our court. So it's, it represents upside, but I just wanted to make sure it's clear, it's not because we're not marketing to them. So we need to, we need to go negotiate with them.
But just based on your own thinking there, if we, if they're turning away 50% of their students, roughly 50 students per year, and approximately half of that would be 25, those 25 students are no, are not in this projection?
Half, right. 25 are in here, the other 25 are not.
That would go to them, right?
Correct.
So even without renegotiating what the sending town numbers are, even without renegotiating with Region 14, that they would send us their unwanted overflow, we're still looking at a very conservative number here.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think I agree with you saying.
Okay. No, I think that's an important distinction that we want to make to the public, because we want to assure them that we're being incredibly conservative with these numbers.
Michelle?
I also wanted to add on, I think the percentage is-
Does Michelle have a microphone? She couldn't have.
Not, in Region 14, the percentage of their own students participating in their program is, I forget, it's closer to 20 or 22%? Is that correct?
22.
22%. So they have 22% of their population, and we're only using 15%. So it's just another place where we're being very conservative and using a lower estimate.
We are saying 20 total.
Oh, 22%.
22%.
I mean, 20, oh, I got you.
22, so if, so Michelle's point can be seen in the leftmost bar, right?
Yeah.
That 14, 16, 30, 30 total is 22% of our population.
Right. And that's what we, this is.
Yeah, well, we went, originally, we looked at Region 14 and said, what is their participation rate of their own students, and then just applied it to our numbers. That's how we got here. So now we're trimming that back a bit.
One thing I noticed is there is a note, I found the Prada report is on the drive, the most recent one.
Shared.
On the shared drive. And it's, he says that those numbers do include Sherman students, and we're not including.
We had it back.
Right. So it's 162 minus the Sherman students, which, he says 17, though. He said, he averaged 17 in.
So that's-
So we're still up by, yeah.
You're still missing 20 kids or something.
There's a bunch of kids that aren't Sherman, that will also back out those who are New Milford kids that are here, and you got a district kids that are here that are not Sherman kids. And then back down to that number as well. Well, that's interesting, though, because we are, we're being extra conservative because we're assuming that we'll have, we won't even have the number or a relative, relatively similar percentage number of students who tuition in from other districts regardless. So I don't know how you feel about that, however, we want to think about this, whether we've been overly conservative by even removing the percentage of kids who are already transferring in. Does Alan get to use the microphone?
Oh, dear. What, all I said was that we're being extra conservative, apparently, in that, in that we would assume that, were we to have an AgSTEM program, we would have sending kids who send kids to Region 12 to be AgSTEM students under this whole plan we've been talking about, that that wouldn't mean that we'd get no kids sent from Sherman or New Milford who are tuitioning into our system as they are now. The discrepancy, I'm thinking from what Bob says and from finding the numbers myself in the Prada report, was that if 162 is what Prada said, it's because he included sending students from Sherman, and as Bob says, from New Milford and from other districts where parents choose to send their kids here, on top of the official program we have of Sherman. What we've done in these numbers to reach 133, to Valerie's point, is that we have taken out all of the extra sending students. So we're not including anybody from Sherman, which is the bulk, which Prada averaged at 17, plus, as Bob says, there are a handful of students who come in, I guess a handful meaning about 20.
Actually, more than Sherman. The report that we pulled up, there were more students enrolled in the 60.
Right. So in other words, so what we have to do here now is we have to think about how conservative we want to be, because we're basing our conservative numbers on excluding even people who are already being bused into this district. But those numbers, like with Sherman, Sherman is, in this analysis, Sherman is considered a sending town. So when you, when you're projecting growth coming out of Sherman, you know, we just got to be careful, you're not double counting. And that's why the numbers, that's why Sherman and New Milford are netted out of kids who would otherwise tuition in. Because once they come in through the Ag program, as Bob explained last time we met, they're reported back, they're not considered, at that point, they're not considered a Region 12 student, they're still considered a Sherman student and a New Milford student.
Right.
So if we say we're going to get X students from New Milford, those students would be part of that X. You know, so if we, if we count them here and we count them there, then we're double counting. But, however, we have to make sure that we're not missing anybody either, because if you think about it, we, all of our calculations, we have these lists of sending towns and the number of kids we get from each town. We got like four from New Milford and two from Sherman and blah, 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 right? Now, let's say we have, under the calculations, based on however many kids New Milford is currently sending to Nanawog. Now, I don't know offhand, but let's say four. So we've said, okay, we can figure those four are going to come here now, right? But we have to add to that the whatever seven that are coming to the high school already from New Milford. We can't just cut those seven out.
No, we're not. Those, these are Ag, these are students who participate in the Ag program.
Right.
Those students would still be counted in our total high school population, but they're not going to be-
But we've cut, but we've cut those out if we're down to 133. You see what I mean? Because the 162 number included those.
Well, but when, if you're going to use the three-year average plus one, that plus one is coming from somewhere. And it could be one of the students that are already coming to Shippah.
Right, but I think we're missing the other six who are already coming to Shippah.
Those are tuitioned students outside of that program.
Right. But we're still talking about total population, and they are part of our total population.
Oh, this is just Ag only. These are just Ag students. These are not our total.
Okay. All right, that makes sense now. That, well, that explains, in other words, not that we need to rectify between 162 and 133. Is that clear now, Valerie, why we have 133 and not 162?
No, and, and once again, I have to go into kindergarten here. Is the, is the information on the shared drive that I was referencing, the 162, is that the original Prada that we see in our budget, and I'm trying to get my thing open so I can see the budget number, I mean, but when, when does he ever factor in Sherman students?
We've got to double count it. You're double counting. Because if you're seeing, the population is 133, it's total, right? Just Region 12 students, not tuitioning. Prada, are you going to, is somebody going to be emotional? But you're skipping, Prada's, Prada's is 162. I don't know, because these kids, the difference between 133 and 16 are the students that aren't part of the region. Prada picks them up as part of our overall population. Well, all we can do is calculate the three towns, because the three towns are what we're responsible for. That's the word.
But how does he know we're going to get 20 each and every year? Because sometimes it's varied greatly.
Yeah.
Okay, so back to kindergarten.
Once he gets the numbers that we have, you have to go on the assumption that we're pretty good.
And, and I see that number is the same on the budget figures. So can I, I just get, can I have just a quick review of this? Because I just don't get it. And to me, this is the single most important thing, this document, because cash flow comes out of it, ed specs come out of it, the building sizes, everything. Can we just, like, go through that now that the base is 162, nine to 12, in the year 2024 and '25? That we know. So where am I seeing this on this?
We're not using that number. They're not using that number.
So we're not using 162 because we've backed out Sherman.
We have to back out the non-resident students.
And that number is not 20.
29 and 12.
Okay, so, okay, and that's an average.
The Elford students that are here, the Oakville students, and just add students that are on the first, we get a question. But it goes straight into the revenue line under tuition.
Okay, so, so could we start, Tony, with, or Anthony, rather, with that far-left column again? I mean, if you would indulge me, because once again, this is the single most important thing that we have to defend. So what's 196 from? What's 226 from? Far-left.
So 196 was the estimated enrollment we would get from the sending towns.
Okay, this is all sending.
Right.
Okay.
And then the 16 are the students that we would recover from Region 14, our students that we would recover from Region 14.
Okay.
And the incremental 14 would be new students, Region 12 students, who would want to participate now that the program is here.
Okay.
The way we got to 14 was we used Region 14's participation rate of approximately 22% of their population. So we took 22% of Prada's numbers, net of Sherman and New Milford, as Bob explained, and came up with 30 total students. So we just kind of backed into the 14 based on the 30. That's how we came up with the original one. So instead of using 22%, the district would like to use 15%. So now we take 15% of Prada's net number, and we came up with a total of 20.
Okay. So that's our kids either recovered or enrolled here.
Correct.
And then the rest, 131.
All come from the sending towns.
Okay, except, and that's, the 151 is yes Bethel cap with Danbury.
Correct. Danbury capped at 15.
Okay, got you. So that's the basis, and the rest are different scenarios based on with Bethel or not.
Yes. And what we were, you know, what you're seeing is that there's some variations around a theme, so, you know, if you get a little bit more, you know, than a plus one from any given sending town, or if you get a combination of, you know, even if you can move Bethel or Bethel comes in, et cetera, there's an operating range that you're working with. So what we need to do tonight, I think, here is-
What do you ask, what do you think we should do?
Well, what I think we should do is, what number do we need to put in the ed specs? And the recommendation here is to go, is to- The recommendation here is to go, is to put a, put a range in that we believe that the enrollment, total enrollment in the program will be from 150, or 151 to 119.
Are you prepared to make that motion?
Do I, it needs to be, okay.
We need to have a number.
A range or an average?
Our recommendation would be to use a range in the ed spec, and that gives us some leeway, it gives the state a little bit of leeway. I mean, this is not for us to develop our economic forecast, right? We, we still have that left, that work in front of us. But for the purposes of the ed spec, to get it through the process so DAS can continue their evaluation of the plans we're, we're about to see, I think a range will suffice. I haven't heard, I don't think there's a requirement from DAS that we have to put a specific number in there, right?
No, I think if we give them a range and they want a number, they'll come back and tell us that.
Yeah, so.
Wouldn't.
So that would be the recommendation.
Valerie?
Well, what happens if we just take an average? Because my concern is the differential is entire classrooms. And, and an average at least brings us a little bit more to, you know, what we could probably expect.
Taking an average of the range, I, I would be fine with that.
Well, I, I propose we.
What is an average of the range?
About 135. I propose we tell them that our, for planning purposes, our average population would be 135.
Is there a motion?
We're getting silence over here.
I move, I move we.
I. Hold on, hold on, please. Alan, is there a motion?
Yeah, I, I move that we submit a, a, as an adjective I need here for population enrollment, a predicted, a working.
134.
Projected.
Projected population enrollment of 135.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anything else? Michael?
The one concern, and maybe this could be addressed in the next portion of the presentation when we're hearing about the revised architectural plans, would be, as we've, we've determined that this is a very conservative estimate that we're working with and that we're sending on to the state. What if we are incredibly successful in attracting students? What I would like to avoid would be for us to recreate the problem that Nanawog has. And maybe some of us are thinking, well, if only that could be a problem that we'd have to worry about, but, you know, five years from now, I would not like to be turning away 50% of the students that we've attracted.
That's a great question, and one we've, we've talked about, and I'll, I'll tell you what we came away with, is when, when you're looking at the, the scope of the program, we start to get into some sort of binary decisions, you know? If you need a classroom to teach a certain subject, the classroom needs to be X by Y, you know, feet in order to hold the equipment, et cetera. It becomes less about how many kids you've got in there. So when we looked in and said, fine, so then what is the max capacity that the plan is basically giving us? And where, where are we, you know, where's, where is our capacity line? What came out of it was we, if we went back and got the projections from the original business case, that we would have the capacity to hold that many students. So I didn't get, I didn't get the sense that we were capacity constrained underneath the business case that we put together a year ago. Greg, you might be in a, in a different, or anybody else familiar with it, but I, I don't think that's going to be a problem, Michael.
Greg, could you address that, what the, what the max capacity would be with these revised plans?
I don't know if we can address that, because I don't know if we can calculate that. I, I think the.
I, I don't know that our architects have addressed the issue of maximum capacity for this building. Part of it depends on how you use the rooms and how many classes you conduct in. And I think, I, we believe that this is the right amount of space. Since the beginning of the program to the present time, we have not changed the, we've, some spaces have shrunk, but they haven't shrunk by numbers that, that cause us to believe they're, they're significant from the standpoint of it's going to limit the number of, of students in a severe way. So I, I, I don't think this is so radically different that it's going to create that problem. It may be the utilization of the space. And don't forget, we still have surplus space in this building.
Right.
So at a minimum, that number of 226 at the far left, we would be able to accommodate, even though the numbers we're using are certainly less than that.
I, I defer that to the, the specific on that to the, to our architects, but I, my guess is it probably would.
I mean, we, we have, as Greg said, we haven't changed, the only, what we're looking at is we've, we've moved square footage from inside, from outside to inside. We haven't eliminated anything. Otherwise, we, we impact the curriculum, and if you don't teach the same curriculum set, then you don't have a bona fide program. So those big blocks haven't changed. So I, I don't believe that our, our capacity is going to be any, any different necessarily than what we had originally. What it gets into is whether or not, based on the, the enrollment numbers we use, the staffing plan that is still is being re-looked at, that's, if you're going to see a variance or, or something that's dependent on enrollment, it's going to be the staffing to an extent. And, and we haven't looked at that yet. So.
Anthony.
Different constraint.
Just to be fair, we did, we did eliminate a, a classroom in the Equine facility and a multipurpose room, but we still have, again.
Yeah.
Enough space in the existing building to make up that if, for whatever reason, we didn't have a place to put it. But even though we've taken those out, it's not, it's not that it's going to cause a decrease in the program. We have other alternate space that can be used to accommodate what would have gone on in those rooms. But we have not reduced the number of, we have not taken out any program element, any room with a program element. It's the same number of rooms, the same, in general, the same approximate space. Space has changed a little bit. We'll talk about that when we get there.
Yes. All right, is there anything else? Peter?
So Greg, what you're saying is that the, the numbers that we just put on the table are relevant, but not really relevant in the sense that the building could take a larger capacity. Is that what you're saying?
Well, the, the thing, the thing is, is if you're going to conduct an AgSTEM school, there's a certain critical mass of things you need to have in there, and we haven't changed any of the things. We haven't, we've changed slightly the size of some of the things, but not in a way that's going to negatively impact it. The, the difficult, you know, the, always the, the issue is, what do you need to have an AgSTEM school? You need these classrooms. Now, if you were going to have a massively larger AgSTEM school, if you were talking of thousands of students in here, then you'd need more of these individual rooms. You know, you might need a, a larger food, you might need two food science labs, but in this case, you don't. And you're not, and the difference between the, the highest program we can anticipate and the lowest is not going to require that second food science lab as far as I believe to be the case.
So what is the capacity?
Again, I defer to our architects and I defer to Kim.
What is the largest capacity in, in the plan that we're going to see it? What, what is the, what is the outside of the, the largest capacity that we'd be able to handle in what you're presenting to us tonight? Give me a ballpark.
I don't know, and I don't have any basis to make that ballpark. I have to yield to our architects. I mean.
We're going to have a presentation from the architects. Yes, Valerie? On the motion.
I think, well, the motion also included a conversation about whether we're rightsizing it for the population, and we've come to the conclusion 135 is a good average on the very conservative side. But I just want the board to remember, as we go through tonight, the very all-important letter of September 22nd from the state, in which it reconfirmed their approval of our AgSTEMers, they call it ASTE, A-S-T-E, but also charged the building committee and us to keep the scope of it within the walls and within the declining population. So even though it'd be great to think about expanding capacity for future enrollment, our charge is not to do that right now and to live within what the, what the state has asked us to do in that September 22nd letter. And to my point, if we don't do that, then we might not go forward, though I'm heartened by the most recent correspondence with the state.
All right, is there anything else? Michelle?
Yeah, a couple things. One, back to the, to the point of the 162 versus the 133, I, I, I think backing out the Sherman students might make sense, but that's it. And so I really think 145, I don't know why 133 is being used. I don't think it makes sense to, you know, Dr. Prada's not using, if you look at, at what he said in his report, he's, he's not including kids that are staff, students that are children of staff members or New Milford, other tuitioned-in students. So I think that number's a little low, although if you do the math and you multiply the 145 times the 15%, that's 22 versus 20, so it's not a huge difference. But I, I still, I, I, I question the 133. I don't think that makes sense. I also think that the.
Excuse me, the motion is for 135, is that right?
Right, I was getting to that.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also.
The motion is to use the number 135.
I also think that that is too low.
Okay, I understand.
I'm getting to that.
Thanks.
Because every, we're, we're taking an average of four scenarios, all which are using virtually worst-case scenario numbers, to then average that down. I, I just, I, I don't think that's very realistic. I, I can understand not using the 151 possibly, but we've estimate, we should be using 22% for our own students, not 15, but we're using 15. We should be using a number higher than 133, and we're not. We're, we're assuming virtually no recruitment, no change in anything. So I, I think the 151 is conservative. To then average it down to 135, I just, I don't, I don't, I understand being conservative and realistic, but I don't understand why planning for the absolute worst would be useful in this case. I, I know we need to put together a business plan, and we're trying to figure out ed specs and square footage, but I think we need to be realistic versus worst, worst, worst-case scenario. I, I think 135 is, 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 is too low, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. There's nothing's going to happen unless you file, if you move to amend the motion, if you want to do that.
Well, I don't know how much difference it makes for the ed specs or the business plan. The second scenario, the 139, it's only, I know that's only four students, but that's, that's sort of a minimum of what we've said we would do. That's, that's, I, I, I wouldn't, I can't see it going any lower than the 139, maybe averaging between the 139 and the 151. I, I, I guess I would need to hear logic as to why we should, why we should, why we would want to use a number that's so low that it looks like we're not trying to build a program? Like, how does that, how does, I, I don't, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I understand being realistic, but, but being so worst-case scenario.
It's, it's an unknown. It's trying to be, come up with a defensible number and be conservative, because it is an unknown, but, Peter?
What was the defensible number that the state, didn't the state say something?
Yes.
What was the number they used?
The, if you look at the rightmost column, Pete.
Yeah.
That, I would say, is what they believe, if you read their letter on the 24th, that's pretty much what they're saying, the, I think the enrollment they're, they're looking at. They never gave us a number, but you could pick off the data points and you can come to, to, to that number.
Is that what's behind this number, more or less?
No, that's not right, Anthony.
It, it, it is.
They said that we would be where we are now.
Right, and the delta between where we are now and 2024, using 133, is actually 96, if coming from the sending towns. And they're the ones who suggested 15% for the enrollment. So when you, when you do that, you get to 119. I mean, it's, we're, we're right in the zone. I mean, plus or minus, that's.
We're at 390, oh no, we're at 242. Where are we now? We're at 2.
That's, now, now, remember, there, you know, and there, there was, we live within the Danbury cap, and they said Bethel is, 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 in their mind, hasn't said yes yet, therefore there are no, so it winds up. We're not that far off.
Michael?
I agree with Michelle. I think that what the state is asking us to do is to come up with our best estimate. The best estimate would not be, we expect this to go wrong, this to go wrong, this to go wrong, this to go wrong, and this to go wrong. That's an incredibly pessimistic outlook and an unrealistic outlook.
Nobody said that they expect things to go wrong.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, we're, we're looking at what we're, what we were calling conservative numbers, but I think another way of phrasing that would be an unrealistically low number. I, I, I agree with Michelle. I think that 139 at a minimum would be what we're looking at, and I would feel comfortable with 151.
There's no motion. There's a motion pending that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Anthony shows 133 from this way, I think, plus 38. So we're moving to 158 from this thing analysis.
This is, it's Bob, you know, and that, that projection had, you know, that's, that's the second column in from the left. That gets you to 206. You had 36 in there for Bethel as just an example, so it was slightly overinflated. Yeah, it is at the bottom of Bob's spreadsheet. That's the 36 you were looking at, I believe.
All right, there's a motion, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? There's not, but I haven't heard a motion to amend. I, I, I'm sorry. There's a motion that the number should be 135.
What do you think, 139? It's four kids, I don't.
Yes, Michelle?
Um, I would like to make a motion that we amend it to one, the motion to 139.
All right, is there a second to the motion to amend? All right, so it's been amended to 139.
To 139. I guess. But I, but I asked the quest, the reason I hadn't made the motion is because I had asked the question, I'm, I'm trying to understand the difference that will make as we approve ed specs tonight, look at the building, you know, we're talking about four students. Is it, does that make, it's not that big a deal. It's not that different. I, I just, so if it, if it makes a difference to just take the average of the, I, I, I,
You've made a motion to amend to 139, which has been seconded. Is there anything else? All right, so there's, that motion is pending. Is there anything else on the motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion to amend, which is to 139, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Any, raise your hand if you're opposed, just so we're clear. Any abstain? One abstain. All right, so the motion passes, the number's 139. Yes, now we're on to, I'm sorry? Yes, so it, it's been amended to 139. So all those in favor of the number, using the number of 139 students, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Raise your hand if you're opposed. Any abstain? All right, the motion passes. All right, thank you. So then item three, approve revised ed specs for AgSTEM and science labs.
May I?
Yes.
Yes, this should hopefully be quick. After, I'm kind of like connected to the next presenter, where they're going to go through the new space analysis and the changes in the building, bringing many of it from outside of Shapagh to inside of Shapagh, and you'll get a more specific information about that. But the building, the ed specs, which you approved a year and a half ago, had to be changed to represent the new square footage of the different pieces. So basically, I sent them to you. On the ed specs for the AgriScience STEM Academy, on page six and page eight, I need to put in the 139 students, so that's done. So that will be updated. Everything else is correct based on the space standards. There was one question about the chemistry labs, and we. There was one question about the chemistry labs, and we call them chemistry labs just so that the architect and the construction manager knows that those science labs need to have all of the bells and whistles to be a chemistry lab. They have to have gas, they have to have electric, they have to have water, they have to have the correct, what is that called? Bunton, Bunton, you know what I mean? The surface, thank you, all of those things. So that's why they're called chemistry labs, but they're not exactly all chemistry labs. Yes. So that is really the only thing that has changed since what I sent you. So, Mr. Chairman, if we can have a motion to approve, I guess we should probably do it separately, the educational specifications for the Shapag Valley AgriScience STEM Academy, and then the educational specifications for the science lab renovations.
Valerie? Why don't we do them one at a time?
Make the motion that we accept the ed specs for the AgriScience STEM Academy.
Approve. Approve. That's the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second to approve the ed specs? Peter seconds. Is there any discussion? Valerie?
So you're gonna fill in on page, from the other thing, page nine, 10, whatever the square footage is, are there some new numbers?
No, I'm sorry, okay, no. Those numbers are the sizes of the rooms. All I am changing is on page six in the middle, where it says, "The facility will house a projected maximum enrollment of approximately 200 students." I'm gonna change that sentence a little bit to say 139 students, because it's not really a maximum, but it is going to be, you know, our projected enrollment, and I'm probably gonna put the word, you know, conservative in there. And then on page eight, on the bottom, it says, again, "The proposal will add capacity for approximately 200 students." I need to change that number. So that's the only thing that's changing. Everything else is-
You say conservatively, projected to be?
Yes, yes.
And then all of these classrooms and all that?
That's all correct based on the new, right. Yes, and that was all worked on with the building committee, which you'll hear from in the next motion.
Yes.
Do you have two others, things that you're happy about?
Yes, yes.
Are there priorities A for AgriScience, priority B for labs? Labs are part of the AgriScience, or are these gonna be that separate project before we add the labs to it? And how can we do an A and B priority?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Geeson to-
State signs those rankings to you, you go to sign them after, or you go back and ask them where they got the review from. If a letter revision came in, the rank of science is A and B, so.
And they're working off of you, sorry, sorry.
Although I'm sure you can hear me anyway. So, the state obviously does not realize the new configuration-
Right.
-of what we've been through and will go through. So they're, they're separating it because they think it's an entirely separate project, but somehow that B priority has to be melded with the A because it's a mixed bag.
Yeah, I'll answer that. As a matter of fact, it's going to have to be, and for the reason is, is because we have, in order to accommodate the state's desire to move more of the program into the building, we have literally moved AgStem rooms into the science wing.
Right.
So it would be virtually impossible to do one and not the other, unless you wanted to do it very expensively and make a mess.
So that has to be rectified with the state and is not in any way the latest-
Right.
They know nothing about the-
And my guess is that they would, they would probably go along with that, since it was their idea to move more of it into the building.
Good, okay.
All right, can I add? Yes?
I know you just said this, but I just want to reiterate, you're gonna change in the ed specs, the population. And I know we talked about what the lowest possibility is as far as space, regardless of how many kids you need to educate, but is there a potential for re-investigating the ed specs now that we have settled on an average population of 139? Not that we have the time for that, but if we wanted to stay up-
Right, well, we have done all of that already. I mean, we're kind of like a little backwards. Usually, the ed specs are done first, which is what happened in the original plan of this, and then that's given to the architect, which we did, and they make plans. But then, as we move backwards, we worked on the plans based on the state's recommendations, and then had to go back and revise the ed specs. So I'm, I am very comfortable with the ed specs, I'm very comfortable with the plan, and I just want to remind everyone, as you are in our AgriScience school, every year there are grants you could apply for, so in the future, if we need to grow, if we need to add another outside building, that's always an option. But right now, as Val said, we need to really focus on that letter from the state and do what they told us to do.
I mean, is there more shrink room possibly, now that we've settled on a smaller population? In other words-
No, no, I think we, I think we're comfortable because we can't, we have to have every curriculum area in the plan. So you can't really shrink too much more because you need to have the food science, you need to have the equine, you need to have the plant and animal area. So I think we're really good with the plan.
All right, there's a motion on the table to approve the ed specs for the AgriScience program. Is there anything else on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the ed specs for the state, excuse me, science labs renovations, so-called?
So moved.
Michelle, seconds. Any discussion? Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, it was Jen, I didn't look. Michelle?
I just want to say that I have some reservation about there only being four labs instead of the five that we have now. We have five now, and they are all fully scheduled with five periods a day, one being scheduled six periods a day. So by only having four, that will really tighten our scheduling, and so I guess, I, I'm in favor of the plan, however, I would like to see how some of the additional, some of the renovation inside the walls, what's happening, and, and finding space for some, a potential science class somewhere else in the building, because four labs could really tighten up our schedule, especially if we're gonna be adding AP science classes like chemistry or environmental, which would probably want to meet in there as well. So I guess I would like to hear thoughts on that.
May I?
Sure.
I, as I look at this project, I look at wants and needs. We need four science labs, as you know, our population is declining. The state has made it very clear that you do not need all of the space that, in the future, because you're going to have a declining enrollment. I think we'd love to have more science labs. I am concerned about the economic forecast that's gonna come out of the, the business plan with the reduction in population. I think that not all science classes need to be in a lab every day. So we can put a classroom somewhere near science that is a classroom, and you know, when you need a lab, if you have to, you go into the lab. I think part of the change in culture is gonna be here, that not everyone has their own classroom. You know, we may have to share some classrooms as we move along, and as I said, if, if we need a science lab and we can prove it to the state because our population has grown, we ask for another one, we maybe renovate to get another one, but I, I, I don't think we need it right now, because they're looking at the amount of kids we're going to have in 2024, which is less now than what we have now in the building. And I, I don't know if it's something we need necessarily, and so that was my suggestion to the committee, it was a conversation, and I kind of said, I think, you know, we don't need it right now, but it was a conversation, I will tell you that. I was able to sit in the last building committee meeting a week ago and got a real education, and thank you, Greg, for your leadership on this. And unless I'm mistaken, we have four regular science labs, but then we add two plants, two labs connected to the AgriSTEM, and in addition, we have a food lines, I'm sorry, a food science lab. So we're really getting basically seven labs, but this specification only covers the original four, but we do have lab space, and we've expanded it greatly. And my question is, and maybe I should have looked at this more carefully, but this specification is only for the existing four regular ed labs, not for the AgriScience labs? Because I'm seeing four.
Yes, that is correct. Am I right, Bob?
So the AgriScience ed specs will have that in?
Right, this is just, this part here, the science lab renovations, is the separate project, the B priority, just for the science lab renovations. Right. Those labs you're speaking of-
Right.
-were in the AgriScience ed specs.
But as our population declines, and hopefully we have AgStem people in, there will be enough lab space for all parties that we can see right now, right? Because we're gonna have seven.
One of the discussions that came up in the meeting was to move two group rooms, if you recall, if you were listening to it, and to knock those down. Those are in very close proximity to the labs as we have them today, so if you had to move into a room, the risers in there can come, the idea was to take them out and make it a flat surface to work from, like a conventional room, as opposed to what they are right now. If you look at the diagram, they're, they're in close proximity. Where we would probably put those in, that is your swing space, if you will, your regular educational space, and the labs will work as a lab, and as that is indicated, it kind of operates like you would in a traditional college, where you have classes and you're going to the lab on the days you're studying.
Michael?
Yeah, I actually feel comfortable with the plan, because typically for a lab, high school lab class, you aren't in the lab every single day. Maybe two days a week, maybe three days a week, depending on how you, you schedule it. So that would, would free up lab space that way. The, the question that I had though, actually, is based on what Bob was just saying, that we cannot use the AgStem labs, the dedicated AgStem labs, for non-AgStem students. Here, what, what would be the scenario of a class like AP Biology or AP Environmental Science, which had both AgStem students enrolled and non-AgStem students enrolled? Would we not be able to use an AgStem lab for that class?
That is correct. Am I right, Bob?
Right, so if we have a single student enrolled in that class, then we couldn't-
Totally.
Okay.
And then for classes, because I'm sure there are classes like API Biology, where you're gonna have both ag students enrolled and non-ag students enrolled, those must be in a general ed room.
So, so the set, so we have the, there will be seven labs, but we can't use them, so we're back to the four, but all of the AgStem students bring our population back to where we are now, while if-
Not anymore. We just took off almost 100 kids.
Ah.
We went from 226-
Right, I guess, I guess it depends on how successful the program is. That's true. No, it'll be, it'll be less, it'll be tighter. I'm, I'm, I feel like we can figure it out, especially if we have one of those group rooms turned into a regular classroom, but I'm wondering, is that work included in the renovation?
Not at this time. It's not at this time, it's not something that we can't look at down the road. As I said, I'm trying to, you know, keep that price as low as we can, but the one thing I do want to say is I've had conversations with Ellen Cohn and people at the state, and one of the things they make very clear to us is that you have a very large footprint at Shapag. And they see this building as a place that has a lot of space, and that's why they asked us to bring everything in. And, you know, this building, it says in the ed specs, can hold 800 kids. Now, certainly, it can't because of different things, but that's what's in the ed specs, because that's kind of like the-
Square footage.
The square footage issue.
Formula, yeah.
So it's, we just have to be really careful, and I, you know, I just think we have to be really careful, and that's my advice.
All right.
Rebecca?
Michelle, I appreciate your enthusiasm and your optimism, but I think the other piece that we have to keep in mind is that the current climate on the state level is still not good. And I think that, coming at it from a state perspective, they would appreciate our conservative approach to it and our desire to work as well within a more restricted budget as possible, and that that could potentially help us. I don't think that over-optimism, which could be viewed as such from their, their point of view at this point in time, would help us. I think it's, they're gonna appreciate what they would probably view as a responsible approach to this. So I just wanted to put that out there. We can't forget who our audience is, and they're under a lot of stress right now. The projections for next year are still over 450 million in the hole, so we have to keep that in mind.
Anyone else? Yes, Jim. Greg?
If it's any comfort, Michelle, I think we're going to have to have a change in approach, I think, at Shapag, where we are looking at how these rooms are used, and it is, it is a change in approach, because people are used to their own classrooms. And I think we're gonna have to operate it a little more efficiently, and that means shared classrooms. It probably means that we'll get there, but I'm, I'm somewhat confident that we should be able to, and I, and again, I defer to Pat and I defer to Kim on this, we should be able to, the real question for us is, can we function? Can we schedule the classes we want to schedule and the curriculum we want with four labs? It may not be as nice, or easy, or uncomplicated if we had five. It may mean that some days, classes will have to be, when you're not using the lab facility in a classroom, and I think we can accommodate that. As long as, as long as Kim and Pat are telling us that our schedule will not cause us to have to forego classes with four labs, it just means that there will be lecture classes, a lecture portion of the class will not be in the lab. And it would be, it would be a portion of the class when you wouldn't be using the sinks, the gas, or anything else in the lab. So as long as that's the case, as long as they're telling us that, then I don't have a problem with it. But I think that what we have to keep in mind is that if we go through this program, and if the AgStem school is successful, extremely successful, and we end up with a very large population, and we wish we had the fifth lab, because we've got too many classes that the AgStem have a lot, influx of enough AgStem students that they're, they really mean we need more science labs, then we're gonna have to build that lab, and it's gonna cost us more per square foot then than it would now. And that's really the difference. The difference is not, can you, can you fit it? Of course we can fit it. If we could fit it in this plan, we could fit it 10 years from now, or five years from now, whenever the need arises. The, the issue is, how much is it gonna cost? And the answer is, it will cost more per square foot, because you won't have the benefit of the mobilization of having an ongoing construction project. So you're gonna have to- So you're going to have to do, there'd be a lot of things you'll have to do that you otherwise wouldn't have had to do because they would have been absorbed by the larger project. And that, and that's really what we're talking about. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a risk that we'll need more space. But of course, on your point, which is that you think the program is going to be very successful and that we really are being too conservative here, then that's a, for you, the risk is greater, in your analysis. I'm not sure where I come out, but I'm saying for your, because you believe the program will be successful, the risk is greater that we will end up spending extra money down the road. But the question is, do we balance that against a need to get this, you know, to get the project off the ground and to make it work in light of the realities of the state and their financial situation? So I think that's probably why we have to do it, anyway.
Yes, Michelle.
Thank you, Greg, because that was, that was really helpful. And I will, I will support this. I just want, I'm concerned about the students that we currently have and the curriculum that we offer. And I know we have a huge footprint, but it is not conducive to change. We have these strange little triangular classrooms that are hard to put more than 13 kids in. So I just don't want us to just continually say, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out. I know our staff and administration are incredibly creative and resourceful, but I don't, I don't want to see a science club, class trying to have to meet in the library because we've run out of, I just don't want us to design ourselves short from the get-go. So if that means planning, whether we renovate a group classroom out of the 1%, you know, while we're waiting for access, you know, I don't know. But we just, I just want everyone to be aware that this building, while it might be large, is not as flexible as we would like it to be. And we have some quirky, tiny little classrooms that are not conducive to some of the things that we're displacing in that building. That's it.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to approve the ed specs for the science labs. Is there anything further? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to item four on our agenda. Consider and approve the conceptual drawings and revised square footage from Castle Booze as recommended by the building committee. Mr. Carver.
Yes, I'd like to suggest that you look at the three exhibits that you have in front of you. One of them is a site plan.
I don't think we have them.
Oh, we don't have them yet. I suggest you look at the three exhibits you will almost momentarily have in front of you.
Thank you.
Are there any copies for the public?
I think, did you make any black and white copies? Didn't we make some?
There were some here on this table.
People took them already.
All right, if you have black and white copies, please relinquish them.
Right, if you have black and white, give them back. Here, you can just give them back to Sue over there, if you don't mind, and then people can take them. Okay. If people need them.
I want to invite next Monday night, I'm going to talk to Greg about it, Charlie, do you, can you give us a timeline, sorry, I think it's done tonight? What we need to do when, what are the big...
Once again, proving that if you want to know how something's done and you want to get it right, get a Shapag student to help you. I would suggest that you look at these three, at the three things that have been presented to you. I think I would start with the site plan because this is what will make it clear where things have gone and what's happened. Hope everyone can see that. Pete, I know you may have the most trouble. If you remember, previously, we had the large addition here to the north of the building. What has happened now is we have taken a good bit of that addition and moved it into the Shapag footprint, into the building. And it's been moved here at the north, at the, at what will be the, what is currently the northeast corner of the building. And it's also been moved into the existing science area at the south, southern portion of the building. We also took the greenhouses and relocated them into the field in the southern portion of the building. And we'll explain why that is. The, and so, and the other thing we did was we, we took that, it was a vehicle garage building that has been moving around the site like a, something that, the equipment building, that is something that's really, could not quite find a home. And that has now been attached to the existing addition. And so that's very important to note that. And what that does is, is it eliminates this building, which really was the problem in the site because it kept causing site issues everywhere it went. And it's now in a good, stable location that actually puts it next to the facility where they're actually going to work on, on the vehicles that might be in that building. So it actually makes a lot more sense that it's there. The other thing that you'll see as part of this is that the, is that the, the site is slightly changed in that it's a, it's a much more free-flowing site. The circulation is better as a result of that. And our architects can address the specifics on that if you have, if you have questions. But primarily, what's happened is most of the addition has gone into the building. And so, and so that's how the site lays out, and that's where things are. Note, when you look down at the science area, this area that's, that's highlighted here, it's...
Blue and orange on your, or green and orange on your plan?
That's all existing building. There's nothing new down there. That's all, all within the existing footprint. The only thing that's new at the southern end of the building is the greenhouses. And the greenhouses, and we're going to talk about that, we've actually reduced them from three to two. And we have reduced the size of the headhouse as well on that. But we've, we've added a hallway between the headhouse and the greenhouse that didn't used to exist before. So that's, that's what's happened there. So then, if we, if we look at the next thing, which is the floor plans. Yes?
How much site work have we saved? How many playing fields, tennis courts? Have we saved any of that because we've moved in the walls more?
No. But, well, in terms of the tennis courts, it's the same six tennis courts we planned to build before. It's the same number of playing fields. We haven't changed the playing fields or the tennis courts. As to whether we have simplified the site or eliminated any site work, I'll defer to Jennifer and Chuck.
Not really a precise measure.
So we...
We could use a better, terraced block walk area to the north. And so some of that area, the most important, that's all down. And the vehicle storage building, that's where it's playing now, that's where it's all, we did simplify it, but the rooms have to find a long door, a vehicle storage.
But I don't have the before and after, I just have the after. The tennis courts, the hockey fields, the baseball field, the soccer fields, how much of that have we, we had incursion into that, correct, for the original plan? And now we don't?
No, I don't think we had incursion into it. The tennis courts went into a vacant area of the site that didn't have an athletic field on it. The athletic fields are essentially, they're roughly the same athletic fields we have now.
So you should save fairly substantially on, on that kind of site work related to playing fields?
No. Because we're still doing all the same things. Up here, we added a soccer field. If you recall, this is one field going this way, and we, we've added some, some site work over here, and we have added a, some retaining, retaining structure here in order to have two fields here. Because that was part of the plan from the beginning, and that hasn't changed. We were always adding that extra field because we frankly need more athletic fields. It wasn't so much an incursion in that we were taking up space right here with, you know, here you had your tennis courts, but we were taking in a piece of this area that theoretically is, was playable before, but is no longer because it has a building in it. This area where the equine center is, is really not being used for, I think, I think that area may have the, may have had some track and field things like javelin and what have you in it, but it's not being used for any playing field. It's not a playing field.
And the track is untouched?
The track is untouched. That area remains, the track and the soccer field remain untouched.
Great, thank you. There we go.
All right. So if we want to look at the building itself, and if you look at the building floor plan, what you'll see on it, just so you know, is you'll see the equine facility floor plan over here, the animal facility floor plan here. This is not where they're located relative to this. They're just tucked onto the corner of this map. If you want to know where they're located, you look at the site plan, and that tells you where they're located. The equine facility here, the animal building here. But they've been put onto this plan so it could all fit on one sheet. All right. What we have essentially done is we have taken the addition, the addition used to be here, and the greenhouses used to face, actually to the west. The equipment garage was somewhere else on the site, a couple of different places over the time this has been looked at. What we've done is we've, in essence, turned the building. The greenhouse has been removed and placed down here by the science lab, beyond the science labs. And we have removed most of what was in the building and placed it into the, into the existing building. Let me tell you that we have placed, with a couple of small exceptions of things like evaporator rooms, storage, electrical rooms, and a few of these small things and hallways, we've taken every bit of space out of the addition that could be taken out of the addition and put it into the building. The reason they're still an addition is the greenhouses obviously are a separate facility, and you can't have those in the building, they don't work. You need a separate type of building. The, the equipment garage is an equipment garage, it was always outside the building, because it needs higher headspace than the existing building provides. The same thing with the agricultural mechanical shop, that requires additional headspace we can't get in the existing building, and hence it has to remain outside. And so the, and the other things that are in this are, are in there because they're associated with it. So they have to be outside the building. So that's why you have this space as an addition rather than trying to incorporate it somewhere within Shapag. So we feel confident that from the standpoint of DAS, they will, they will see that all of the space outside that's being constructed as additions is specialized space required for AgSTEM that cannot be provided within the existing building. And that's been the premise that we've gone on. And I think what you'll also find is that, that we have, we have constructed this so that the sales area is in the far northeast corner of the building. And that's good. Because if you look at the site plan, the sales area is right here in this northeast corner of the existing building. And you have this parent drop-off, this nice parent drop-off where they come in and go right in here and around the circle. And you've got parking around the circle for the sales area. So when they're conducting sales, they have parking right outside the door. And you have, you have access to it, which is separate from the rest of the school. And so that, that becomes a nice discreet area. The other nice thing about that sales area is that sales, the access can be limited to the sales area and maybe the hallway right outside of it, but the rest of the building can be closed off from there. So if sales are going on in times when the building is not open, or when it is open, there, you can restrict access from the rest of the building. And so from a security standpoint, it works out quite well. But by and large, everything has been placed in here. Now, we put two labs, the biotechnology and the plant science classroom lab, down here at the far end of the science facilities. They dovetail nicely from a standpoint of purpose with the science facilities, and it gets them in the building. And that's how we have managed to get all of the square footage that used to be outside inside. And if you don't have any questions about the layout, I'd be happy to take you through the final piece of this, which is really a list of the changes and what changed as a result of this, this change to the plan.
Go ahead, Greg.
That's the space analysis. Let me just preface my remarks with a couple of, a couple of issues related to the space analysis. You're going to see, in the column, the second, second to the la, second to the rightmost column called Delta, May to November. So you're going to see three columns that have, that have square footage numbers in them. On the far left, you've got the, you've got the description. Then the first thing is ed specs. Now, remember, the ed specs were created before anybody did any plans. Those were back at the beginning. So those were based on best estimates and guesses. The middle column under room area is the schematic design for May of 2016. That's when we actually fleshed it out. So you'll notice there are changes between the ed specs and that because as they, as the architects laid out the building and as they talked to the, the individuals and professionals who were involved in the planning process, it fleshed out the space and they decided they needed certain things, they didn't need other things, they needed more of certain things, less of others. And so that's where you get those numbers from. That was our May schematics. And then finally, the, the next column is the conceptual design from November 2, 2016, which is what you're looking at. So the column that's the delta is from the May schematics to this, not from the ed specs to the current plan. It's from the May schematics to the current plan. And that delta tells you how much square footage was subtracted, how much was added in, in connection with any given item. And there are some remarks in the remarks column, which just, you know, give you the reason for why something was done, when, mostly it's on things that went from something to zero. It tells you what happened to it. Some space was moved, certain uses were moved from one lab to another. And so that's why the space goes to zero. It's not because we've eliminated any program, it's simply because we moved it to somewhere else within the facility. So if you look at those deltas, I don't, I think you have to be careful not to focus too hard on them because a number of those items are small changes, one square foot, five square feet, 15 square feet, 40 square feet. These things result from the difference between this plan of November, which is a conceptual plan, and those numbers may change yet again when the conceptual plan is turned into a full schematic plan. So that's why don't focus on the little numbers, you focus more on the larger numbers to understand what happened here. Otherwise, you'll get lost in the details, and those details may change. One example of that is if you look down under the, under the science specifications at the very bottom, the science lab alterations, you're going to see an item called electrical under science renovations, and it says minus 150 feet. We didn't eliminate the electrical room. It's going to come back, but it's something that disappears from a conceptual plan that cuts back in when it's ultimately done. So there are things like that, that 150 square feet didn't disappear, it's not going to disappear, but it may be 80 square feet, it may be 155. When they actually lay out the building and when they actually do the work that tells them how much of electrical room they need, that's when those, when those issues get resolved. So don't focus on the fine details. So if you go through this, there are basically, to my mind, four categories of why something changed. In many cases, it changed because once you went from a building that was being constructed anew, where you can plan your space, into an existing building, you've got certain constraints the existing building structure provides. So you've got to fit things within a column space, which is something you don't have to do when you're constructing a building anew because you can plan out all your spaces. Here, you've got some limitations. So you're going to see some square footage that changed simply to fit it within the existing building. So individual room square footage might be slightly different. The first example is the food science lab is 100 square feet smaller. It's not because we reduced the program, it's simply because when it fit into the building, that's where, that's how much space was there. On the other hand, you'll see, you'll see that the, that the storage room under lab shops is 150 feet larger. That's not because we suddenly needed more storage so much as where the storage room ended up, there's more square footage there. So that is an unavoidable problem that happens when you are going from planned space into retrofitting it into an existing structure. So that's the first, that's the first. If I say it's a, it's a, it's a fit within the space, that's what that is. There's a second type of change, which is the change in the building orientation. That caused some changes in square footage. And then there's something we call a design fit, which is in order to design it, we made some, it required some changes in the size of it in the design, the design came that changes in the size of it in the design. The design came that way. And then there's a fourth category of things that are basically program, I guess I would call it program refinements. In some cases, we decided after further study and further looking that we might need a different type space configuration. And so the program was refined. In some cases, there were reductions made because the state wanted to reduce certain kinds of facilities, but those were not, there are not very many of those. In most cases, they're because the program has been refined. So this is what the building committee looked at, and this is what was presented to us. What I'm telling you is what the architects told us, and I'm trying to keep it as simple and uncomplicated as possible. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I think you'll find that most of the changes to the labs and shops resulted from fitting it within the column space or change in the building orientation. Those were the things that caused those to change.
And the approximate total reduction in square footage is?
Well, you see, this is where you've got to look at it carefully.
I understand.
Because what I want you to look at is I want you to look at the leftmost column underneath, down here at the bottom where it says, it's in a box, it says additions, standalone greenhouse facility, standalone animal facility. If you look there, you're going to see that, under the schematic design, we had new construction of 61,880 square feet. And that includes the standalone garage, all right? We had 9,500 square feet of internal alterations in the building, and these are all color-coded. The colors in this chart, well, they sort of match the colors here, not quite. And then we had a total of 71,385 square feet, which differs from the ed specs, because the ed specs were 73,500 square feet. So it's my understanding that the referendum numbers were based on the ed specs, because that's where we were at the time the referendum numbers went in. So the actual building, as we laid it out in the schematics, was slightly smaller. Now, we are going to have new construction from 61,880 in the May plans to 48,460. So it's a decline of 13,000 feet. Interior alterations double, roughly double, from 9,505 to 18,020. But the total AgSTEM grant total, the program total, goes from the ed specs of 73,5 to the May plan of 71,385 to the current plan of 66,480. So it's a reduction of about 6.9% from the May schematics, but it's a reduction of about 9.6% from the ed specs, in terms of the total size of the project. And if you want to know why it reduced, you would have to go through the columns and see where reductions occurred. The principal reductions, I'm looking at the things that went to zero, were there was a natural resources, environmental science, aquaculture portion that was at 1,030 square feet in the May plans that went to zero, not because it was eliminated, but because it was now included within the aquaculture lab. It was decided that those things meshed together well, and with the square footage involved in the aquaculture lab, that would work very well for those to be together. So we were able to get a savings there. There's a multipurpose room that was 1,245 feet that was eliminated, and it was eliminated primarily because we were trying to eliminate rooms to be in new construction that we didn't need. And a multipurpose room, because we've moved the program into the building, we have other places within the building that can be used for multipurpose should the need arise that we need that multipurpose room. So we do have space in the building to do it. And Val, I'll get to you in just one second. There are some numbers that changed on custodial spaces and restrooms. Don't focus on that, because when we changed the addition to a much smaller building, the code required fewer stalls and smaller restrooms. But the building restrooms are being redone, and they're maybe slightly larger, simply because we now will rebuild our restroom facilities in the existing building to meet current ADA code. So those will change slightly, but I wouldn't focus on the custodial issues. There was a classroom in the equine center before that was eliminated. It was 760 feet. There was an office in there that has been eliminated because we decided it was really not necessary to have an office in there. You're not supervising a classroom and other things going on. You're supervising simply what's going on in the equine facility. And the other things that have been, there's some things like the manure storage. It's no longer inside, and that didn't come from any great idea, other than the fact that the people doing the program said, we really don't find it desirable to have it inside. We would prefer to have it outside in a covered space. So that 210 square feet, the manure went outside. Makes sense to me. So those are the principal things. There have been some reductions of square footage of things. There have been some increases of square footage of things as the program was further refined, and that's how we get to the totals of the 6.9% reduction from May. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Val?
So I think these reductions are great and appropriate, and once again, September 22nd letter is our guide, but we don't want to have a program without a great facility. How to interpret? The 49,05 decrease plus the 18,25 for the science labs, 67,30 decrease overall in projects, square footage? Am I doing that right?
No, you have to be careful, because what happens is the addition, I mean, the addition went from 26,290 to 13,6, but 3,600 feet of that, or 3,260 feet of that is the standalone garage that was added to the addition. So you have to be careful when you look at the numbers to make sure you understand that it used to include the greenhouses, now it includes the garage, but the greenhouses are still there. So you sort of have to, if you want to figure this out, to get apples to apples, you need to take that 13,006, increase it by 5,940 for the greenhouse, and then decrease it by 3,260 for the standalone garage, and you'll get back to what it used to be. I know that sounds confusing.
It is.
But unfortunately, I can't help you.
So how much square footage are we saving with this right sizing, regardless of whether it's under the roof or not?
You're saving 4,905 square feet.
Okay. So a little less than 5,000 square feet for the program that we're going to present, we've decreased the square footage.
Right. But you're also, the other thing you have to appreciate is you're also moving, you're losing 13,420 square feet of new construction, which is more expensive than retrofitting.
Oh, yeah.
And you're gaining 8,515 square feet of existing building. So it's
Yep, got it.
So it's a mix, and that will eventually
But if people ask us, you've looked at it, you've accounted for the numbers, you're right sizing to 139, give or take kids, and so we've decreased the square footage needed overall for the program of about 5,000 square feet. Is that how I get out of this?
Yeah.
That's my question. And so 18,25 is because we're eliminating a lab. So the total is 67,30.
That's correct.
That we have decreased, looking at the population.
If you're looking at the total, if you're looking at the total, both projects, but remember, they're separate projects for funding, for bonding, and
Got you. Okay, 67, but one more question. The ed specs show, and I know you like to talk about the horses and the kicking and the running and everything. The indoor riding area of 9,600 was ed specs, but it went up to 11,850.
That's correct.
Is it because of the kicking and the running and the whole thing? I mean, why was it 9,600 to begin with?
I'd like to ask Chuck to answer that question.
experts that came, citizen experts that came in, gave their time and whatnot, especially in the small, large animal building, and the greenhouse. So we had a lot of local advice.
Mike?
Two questions as well. The first question is, by bringing more of the construction into the existing footprint, will that disrupt the educational process here at Chappagh more so than our old proposal?
I wouldn't say it'll disrupt it. Primarily, if my understanding is correct, primarily what we did is we're not invading any of the space involved in music. We're not invading any of the space involved in art, and we're not invading the space involved in the television studio, and the, I think there's some food prep areas here that exist now. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
I haven't been in there in so long, I've forgotten. What we really, the primary area of the building we grabbed was down in the science area, and this corner over here, which really was not being used for classroom space, it was being used for, that's where they've got the ceramics in there, they've got the
Yeah, they have a whole bunch.
The whole bunch of things that are related to the art program, but not necessarily class part of the art. So we're going to redistribute any of that space. There's like a, what is that thing called, Don? It's the, is it kiln? The graphics area, yeah.
May I? May I?
Yeah.
There will be a phasing plan once we get into the construction phase, where, you know, pieces of the building will be cut off and classes will have to be moved, and, you know, that's part of when you get into the work with the construction manager. You have weekly meetings with Kim and the group, and, you know, we need this area, we need that area. So we make do. It's part of construction in a school, but it's always very safe. It's always very planned, and we limit the disruption as much as possible.
Do you see the science labs, that space? Would that be, would we try to do that during the summer so that we wouldn't be closing down our science labs?
We're just not there yet. You're asking questions that, you know, are like
Haven't gotten to.
Three months down the road. I mean, we're going to try to do that as best we can, but sometimes you have to be a little flexible.
Yeah, Mike, there clearly are going to be disruptions to the normal Chappagh routine.
Understood.
When I was saying about disruptions, I was thinking in terms of something where we had to eliminate something in our existing program. No, we're not. Things will have to be moved. Space will be shared in this facility in a way that it hasn't been in the past. Again, what we're doing is we are making the existing building house more than it currently houses. So naturally, there are going to be changes.
My second question is, will the timeline of construction shift? In other words, will it be speeded up, or will it take longer because of what we're doing by working within the footprint more?
Rather than end of summer. So it actually, it makes it a little bit less time-consuming, if I get that.
Valerie?
Two related questions. We were told ages ago that if you add new population or disturb this area in any way, it triggers an EPA review of the septic system and all manner of things that have to happen. What's going on with the septic system? And related to that is, since we've made these big changes and no one can tell yet, because you haven't finished your estimates, I assume, we're under the 39 million guesstimate?
We believe so, but Chuck, would you like to speak there?
The conceptual number, ONG, but I can assure you that we're under, because when we were full-blown, the original concept was based on that. We're now doing less, moving stuff, doing about the same cycle. So we should be under. By how much?
Great.
I can really guess. It's up to ONG, but I'm sure they'll be happy to answer the questions you might have about that. So we're not in danger of increasing.
Great. And then about the septic?
Well
We're carrying a number in that estimate. Now, septic is really based on population, and it was based on the original population, the logic, the experience. That will be a subject of a true study by a professional engineer, and we'll have an answer when it is. The place will get more.
What about timeframe? Because I'm concerned it might hold up the production of this. It should be aligned with what you expect to be the timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because we've heard like years of study sometimes for EPA.
I don't think so.
Or is it DEEP?
I don't think it's EPA. I think you're talking about DEEP, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection of the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification. So the sales, so the graphic art was where the sales area went, right?
Correct.
So that's going to have to be, so that's being displaced and has to be relocated.
Has to be relocated.
Right. We, I mean, we're rapidly running out of available space to use, so we're going to put, I mean, I'm looking at the board, Pat. I mean, we're doing, you know, my concern is where, like where Michelle was talking about with the science labs. We're doing this because we're trying to preserve the high school, and at the same time, we can't handicap the high school by taking graphics art, even though it's not a lot of equipment, or whatever it is, and we need to put it someplace. Now, we're going to share a room, and now we might be introducing schedule constraints, where you're starting to share common space. So I'm just not seeing enough detail with answering these questions that makes me really comfortable, that, you know, we're going to make this all work. I really don't like that we'll figure it out when it comes to our existing program. So help me out.
You're talking about relocating, first of all, the space, the reason the space is this large, where it is today, is primarily because its space is that large. It was an empty room. The amount of area that's needed is probably nowhere near, in fact, it is, should be nowhere near the size of that space.
Okay.
So what our understanding at the building committee is, is that this space will be easily relocated somewhere else within the existing building without creating any kind of loss of program. I mean, clearly, we may
But where?
Situation in which some rooms have to be shared, but I'm relying on Pat and Kim to tell us whether we have rooms that are underutilized in this existing space. We also have, none of these walls are permanent walls either that you're looking at around you here, except for the ones that are cinder block in the back there. These are all movable, and these partitions can be moved, attitude changed.
Greg, that's all great. So we're saying that anything that's going to get displaced, we'll figure it out, and we'll find a budget for it at some point in the future, and that's where we are.
I think we're going to, we're going to look at that as part of the, we're going to see what we can do as part of the budget of the project, if we have to relocate anything significant.
Right now
One thing we're talking about, just moving some chairs.
Right. Right now, the two rooms that are being dislocated, displaced right there are not rooms that need any special equipment.
Okay.
Okay? So you can literally move those rooms. They would be, the one is a computer lab, and one is the graphics room. Okay? So you can move those rooms to any of the rooms, like here on the outside wall over here. We have special ed classes that have like six kids in classrooms. Okay? So those kids can very easily be moved to a different space. When you think about like some of these rooms here, all of these rooms have one teacher in them. They don't all teach. There are seven periods in a day, and teachers don't teach seven periods. So there's a lot of swing space, and that's the conversation with the state. You have a very large footprint. You have, that's why they don't want us to build anything outside, bring everything inside. And again, I have, Pat, I want it all. I want it all. But I am very cognizant of my conversations with the state in that they want us to be efficient and effective with the space. And at this point, I don't think we need to, you know, put in a large amount of money to move a computer lab to another room somewhere. I think we have that
another room somewhere. I think we have that space. Again, you know, that's just the way, remember, we're going to have less kids than we have right now.
I know.
So that's where I'm at. I mean, certainly, you know, as we go through the project, if there are things that have to be done, there are contingency funds. If we wanted to, you know, make one of the or two of those round rooms and flatten them out, you know, we have the funds to do that kind of stuff. I'm trying to get us through the state to let them see, we have tried every way humanly possible to keep this at the lowest number, not only for the state, but for our community and taxpayers. So that's what I'm thinking.
To get us, to get us through the next gate, I'm not suggesting that we need to figure out where some of these displaced classrooms are going to land. I think that's a level of detail that the state, for what their purposes are, my sense is, they're not looking at that. My comment is more about, for us, that as we continue to go forward, while they might not be concerned about that level of detail, I am, and I believe we all are. So I would like, as we go forward and refine the design, because I realize it's still rather conceptual, right, and there's this tuning that's going to go on, that we go through, and we figure out, and we go, you know, as small as the details may be, is where will that graphic art room be located tomorrow? And if there is cost, identify those costs, and, you know, and just drive everything to ground. So we have a complete analysis. That's my request.
No, I think it's a fair request, and I think that's what we'll do as part of the project. I think what, where we are is, the point of this plan is, the point of a conceptual plan is to prove that it works, to prove that you can do it, that you can design this with the AgSTEM space, this much of it in the building. And I think we've accomplished that. And if there are some minor tweaks to where things have to be relocated, they will be. Don't forget, one of the things we eliminated from the old space was a lot of faculty space. There was, and the reason we did that is because when we redid this space back here, we created a lot of space we didn't have. And now we can have a unified faculty in that area, including the AgSTEM. I mean, we no longer need to provide a separate space for AgSTEM faculty to prep, because we now have an enormous amount of extra space over here. So when you make changes, anywhere in the building, if, when we start playing with these science labs, we discover things we may want to do, it may make space come available that otherwise wasn't there, because the space was inefficient. It becomes more efficient when you start moving things around. And so that, I think, is part of the concept. It's going to change. Also, we are going to continue throughout the planning process to continue to value engineer the project. And if we see other opportunities to reduce costs by changing elements of it, and I don't mean changing program, I mean changing the way it's built, the materials, the fenestration, the type of facade, you know, those are things that we will be looking at and doing. You know, our goal is, is to get the program met with the, you know, with a good building that is the most efficiently designed and executed as possible. Now, just so, to keep me honest here, have I accurately depicted what you told us about these plans? Have I missed anything? Is there anything you want to add? Because I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, just have my having glossed over something that's important that I may have missed.
39, which is a roughly 37, 35, something percent reduction in income in that way. I don't, this is not a, literally, a 37% reduction in space or in building costs. But we also have to, I think, satisfy our population and our taxpayers in that what we had last year was a project that was great for our students, great for our region, and would end up being revenue positive very shortly. And that was based on the cost of the project, and the revenue being the fact this is one thing you can do with a school project that actually makes money, is have it be something that districts send their kids to. Having reduced the population, it looks as if this will no longer be a revenue generating project over the 20-year period. I don't think. Are we able to reduce the project building and the operating costs such that it will remain that way? Are we even close? Because then we have, you know, we can get, we can, you know, vote yes on this today, but I still think then we have another point where we have to get to, this is a different project than what people voted on.
No, I don't know that it's a different project, but I'm telling, but...
It has a different price tag, different price tag.
No, the price tag is going to be less. The question is, is exactly how, what's the payoff prospect? What's the cash flow? It's really an issue of cash flow. Because in 20 years, if, no matter what, the project's going to be paid off, because they're going to be 20-year bonds. So the question, the real question is, is what's the cash flow during that 20-year period of time? Is the cash flow more negative, and is it comfortably more negative, or is it uncomfortably more negative? And I think that's the issue. We don't want to, but the project will almost certainly, we haven't seen the numbers yet. Until we see the numbers, and let's have that as a big caveat, until we see the numbers from ONG, we don't know what the cost of the project, and therefore, I can't speculate as to whether it's going to be closer or less close. We don't know till we see it.
It's a future discussion then.
For another meeting. My last question then is...
Based on some of the things we talked about when we were going for the 139, with this new reduction, if we are overconservative, and within five or six years, we hit the 196, the 226, the 240, was our upper limit before, can we still maintain a, can we still satisfy the high end of our population projections, even though we're aiming now at a conservative low end with this plan?
Well, again, we have not taken elements of, we still have the same elements. The elements, as you see from the chart, on the sizes of things, the up and down, the elements are close to the same size. Some of them are a little smaller, some of them are a little bigger. But the elements are roughly the same. So I don't think that this is, I mean, if we were planning with the May plan for 230 students, or whatever it was, I can't even remember the number now. But if we, if that's what we were planning for, and now we think we may have fewer, the design changes in the building don't really impact that. They still provide sufficient building, I think, for more students. I don't think we've changed that. What we've done is, is we have eliminated the amount of new construction. We've limited that by more than half, and we've put more of the construction as reconstruction within a building that already exists, almost all of which, all of this space here is either unutilized or underutilized. So you're taking under or nonutilized space, and you're converting it to productive space. And so that change is what you're really doing. You're not, you're not shrinking the program. You're merely reconfiguring the space to build less of it. And in the process, we achieve some economies of scale. We did eliminate one greenhouse. That's a difference. But I suppose if you had, if all of a sudden we found that our assumptions about the amount of greenhouse space that's necessary are way under, and we need a third greenhouse, you're talking about another future project to build it. But the space is there, because we had originally laid this out to put three greenhouses down here, and we scaled it back to two when it was decided two would probably be sufficient. All right, thanks. Valerie?
Well, I'm looking at Bob's original cash flow assumptions and costs, and to Alan's point, if you do a rough and dirty, based on the numbers we have...
Don't. I urge you not to, because you don't.
Let me finish. You see that we are covering our costs without even looking at costs, at 139 kits, even though some come from us, and so the tuition is less.
Operating, that's the next step, and I was going to ask about next steps. Obviously, we've got to do some massaging of the numbers in terms of teaching staff, a whole bunch of costs that are baked in that should be looked at very carefully. So the next step is, I think we've got a good number, we've got a good plan, we hope to save some money.
I think the state should be very pleased that we've made these changes, and indeed, two letters from the state indicate the priority of this, which is wonderful. I mean, we should be so happy that the state has, once again, put their imprimatur on this. Look it up. But we're also in a kind of a positive cash flow, obviously excluding debt service, which is a big elephant. But I think we're looking fairly good. The main thing, next step, is business plan.
Right. And we couldn't really do anything until we had a population, and until we have a conceptual design.
Exactly.
Well, no, we need one other piece, which is the cost.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
ONG and population.
The estimate of the cost.
We need another piece, which is a state reimbursement rate, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Which is in flux. So until those pieces stop moving, we really won't know what we're dealing with.
Yep. But we're getting closer to what might be reality.
Well, each step brings us.
Yep. So I feel fairly good about this.
All right. Well, then, is there a motion to approve the conceptual drawings and revised square footage from Castle Booze as recommended by the building committee?
Second.
I'm sorry, who? Valerie?
Yes.
Seconded by Michelle. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you all for the very hard work, the time spent. Thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
What's our next, what are we doing next on this? Business plan presented at the next business meeting, or how's it going to work?
Well, ONG now is working, and we have a representative here from ONG. Thank you for coming. Spoke to Ken Biega today. They are working on that and going to get us that as soon as possible. Now, I will work with the staff. We need to get everything to the state by Tuesday. This Tuesday coming up, election day, they need the ed specs.
Yep.
They need the conceptual designs. They need the, hopefully, an estimated cost. I'm hoping to have that. And then Bob needs to work on the EDO 49.
Which is?
Which is, Bob, can you just explain what the EDO 49 is?
EDO 49, you have 495 of the original, that's what they're looking for.
Right. And we will hopefully Monday night, if ONG has all their numbers, at least estimate, we'll ask one of them to come, either Ken or this fine gentleman, to share that with you. And we're going to have Castle Booze, Chuck, and Jen work with the building committee to put together that timeline, so that at their next meeting, so that we then will have a timeline of how we move forward to get to the summer of 2019.
And how are we going to request that the priority B labs be meshed with our priority A agri-science?
I will ask that question. I don't know if they have their own categories of what's an A, B, or C, but they know the importance of doing it together. But I will definitely ask that question when I speak to the state.
Because that's essential.
Sorry, did you get an extension on the mission for the labs?
Yes, I, yes. Well, I emailed them, I called them, I told them, I spoke to Costas, and he gave me an extension. But I don't know if he told Michelle Dixon. So I called Michelle Dixon, I emailed her secretary, I said, "Listen, I'm bringing everything up on election day. You'll have everything. Call me if it's a problem." No one called. And the other thing that Bob is doing is, he is putting in a waiver for the space standards, so that this way, they will give us more space due to the fact that we are building an equine center and an animals and all that kind of stuff. So...
Do you know when DAS moves up? When does DAS have to commit their...
December 15th. So I'm, well, I'm assuming that as soon as they get our stuff, they're going to have a meeting with us. And Greg, the building committee members, the people who went last time, will go up and sit with DAS, and they'll ask us questions and ask us to...
That's related to December 15th.
December 15th, it has to be the legislature. That's his deadline. So that's as best as I know.
Is there anything else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. See you Monday night.